Okay, welcome everyone to the zoning board meeting of June 8th, 2021. My name's Marty Akins, I'm the chairman. I make a roll call. Akins, president. Kavais, president.
Yeah.
O'Brien?
Yeah.
President. Mr. Chin?
Present.
Mr. Ray Dell? Mr. Himmel?
Here.
Mr. Franco? Okay, we have five members. We have Akins, Kavais, O'Brien, Chin, and Himmel. Else will be doing the cases tonight. Mr. Kavais, can I have a motion to waive the minutes for 5:25, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from May 25th.
Okay. On the motion, CNN, all in favor, voice up.
Aye.
Don't move. Under all business, case number ZB A 2011, 10 Seconds Mass LLC for variance finding. If I could have a motion to move 429 Hancock Street to June 22nd, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm at number 21-11, 10 Seconds M.A. LLC for variance finding that can construct in addition to the existing fire damaged commercial space for restaurant use on the premises number 429 Hancock Street. I make a motion to continue the hearing to June 22nd.
Second it?
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move. Case number ZB A 2117, Bob Chubis for a variance finding at 15 Jewett Street. He has a letter here, he wants to move this to August 8th. He hasn't gone to conservation, finished up yet, he has stuff to do, so we're gonna move him to August 8th, please, Mr. Bass.
Chairman, in man number 21-17, Von Schubert for a variance finding that can construct a two-family house on the lot using a flow roof, foundation, and driveway pavers on the premises number 15 Jewett Street. I make a motion to continue the hearing to August 6th.
Second.
8th. August 8th?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right, my fault, August 8th. Second it, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Close. So move.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, that's August 10th.
It's August 10th?
Yes.
You gave me a date on the letter, August 8th, August 10th. Thank you, Mr. Bass.
You're welcome.
There are three people, two people, three people. Uh, August 10th, okay. Further on to tonight's agenda, under all business, ZB A 2118, John Flatley and One Crown Drive. They wanna move this to June 22nd?
Chairman, in man number 21-18, John Flatley Company for a variance that can construct a center mount pole billboard sign on the premise number 1 Crown Drive. Make a motion to continue the hearing to June 22nd.
Second. On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move. Is the applicant here for 108 Pontiac Road? Is the applicant, could you raise your hand? Hardy Man Design Group?
Yes.
I have a request from the counselor, he wants to move this till two weeks, to June 22nd, so he can speak with the neighbors. He didn't get a chance to talk to the neighbors and look into what he wanted, he asked me to move it, so would you be okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kavais, could I have a motion to move 109 Pontiac Road till, uh, 6:22?
Mr. Chairman, in man number 21-35, Hardy Inman Design Group for a finding variance, constructing one and a half story expansion to the left of a single family dwelling on the premises number 108 Pontiac Road. Make a motion to continue the hearing to June 22nd.
Second it?
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Back to business. Uh... ZB A 2071, Gene Curran for variance special permit floodplain to raise the existing structure and construct a new structure with less than required front yard setback to maintain the existing garage on the premises 30 Elcott. Gene, are you here? It's Curran.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Sean Hardy, engineer for the applicant.
All right, Sean, first of all, I just wanna get something squared away here that the counselor brought to my attention, that's some emails floating around here and flying around that we're putting you off and, uh, we want, we have an agenda, we have no agenda. The agenda was, and this has been continued so many times because of the death of the guy that was supposed to do this for you.
I agree.
And once we called you, there was no one here, we moved it for you two weeks, we moved it so many times that he says, wait a minute, the neighborhood don't even know what's going on, let's put it off two more weeks, we need to advertise and put this on the record, because people are distracted. So we did it last meeting, and we re-advertised and made it right, so everything happened. The city paid for that ad, as a matter of fact, and, uh, I'm hearing about emails going around that, uh, you know, we're putting it off and we're doing this, that's, listen, no one has an agenda here in 30 Elcott, believe me. It happened because of probably death, and no one got back to us, and there was no one at the meetings when we called you, instead of letting it go and disappearing and making you refile, we pushed it off to help you. So with that, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, um, and I, I don't know anything about those emails, and as you said at the last hearing, I was there and we agreed to the continuance, so.
Right, the counselor was kind of upset, he says, there's some crazy emails going around about I should call Channel 5 and all this, and holy crap.
Okay, um...
You're up.
Thank you, um, should I, um, let's see, can I share my screen?
Uh, could you do that for him, please, Jonathan?
All right ahead, you should be all set.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, as you said, so there's a, this is a proposed tear down and rebuild of a residence, the existing residence is 1.8 feet off of the street line, um, for a front sentence, um, so we are proposing a new 24 by 44 foot residence pushed back, um, 17 feet, but with the hope of being able to maintain the existing garage that's on the site and still allowed to be able to get in behind, um, the, in through there with, you know, a lawnmower or equipment or, or what have you. The architectural plans, we have, um, we can show, we need all the other setbacks, we have, um, we have a 20-foot minimum side setback, a 50-foot right side, 23 rear, the building height is 33, um, so it's under the 35 required with the two and a half stories. It's also elevated, is in the flood zone, opposing the flood vents, the, the smart vents, um, along the foundation as required. We have gone before conservation and received an order of conditions on this, um, I understand... I understand that, um, the last time we, project would continue to re-advertise, and we appreciate that the city did that and paid for that, and that I, to, to date, I have not received any questions or comments, I know there was one neighbor to the rear that I had emailed these plans to, um, but again, I, I have not heard any questions, I'm not sure if the counselor has or not, I don't believe that he hadn't received any, but, um, I'm happy to entertain any questions as you guys see fit.
Okay, uh, I think, what was the height on that again?
33.
And what's the clearance between the garage, because it doesn't say in this plan, in the home?
Um, I had five feet.
Here's his garage, it's just five feet off. Again, I guess. Uh, that was my main concern, how much room you have back there, like, and how many bedrooms exactly do we have here, three?
Uh, I can check the, I have the architectural here, I believe it is, um, bedroom three, yes.
All right. Those are my questions, uh, Mr. Kavais, any questions?
I do not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien?
Likewise, none at this time.
Mr. Chin?
Two questions, if I may, um, the deck on the right-hand side of the house is coming down, correct?
Um, we're proposing a deck kind of centered, if you see here on the screen, um, it's, it's kind of centered on the back, again, it was shifted off to the side to allow clearance to get around through where that garage is.
So where it says deck on the right hand toward the front of the property, that's, that's going to be gone, you're taking that down?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that's, that's existing, yeah, so the dark, um, and, and the dark outline with the, the stippled hatch is what's the proposed, it's the 24 by 44, so that deck hanging over into that other area is going to be demolished, yes.
And the second question is, um, you have written in a fire pit, not quite sure I would recommend that, between two buildings five feet apart?
That's existing as well, so that's, that area is where the proposed deck is, so in that back area, you can see that dark outline there, that's a proposed deck, so that fire pit's existing, all of that existing, other than the garage, is being removed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
No questions at this time. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor? Anita, you got?
Yeah, let me, on the computer.
Hi, I'm sorry, I don't wanna speak in favor, I want any comments.
Anita, hold on, you have to take an oath, Mr. Kavais?
Do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths of God?
I do.
Thank you.
Have the floor. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anita Miller, I'm at a butter at 31 Poplar Road, which is the property right behind 30 Elcott, um, and I did write a long letter of concern to the zoning board, um, sent right after the last, um, hearing, excuse me, and, um, would be happy to share it with Mr. Hardy, uh, I assumed, um, that would have, would have been done already, so I'm sorry I didn't send it to him, I, I've been under the impression that I needed to deal with the board, not directly to, um, Mr. Hardy. Our concern is really twofold, um, that we're concerned about the increasing size beyond the allowable footprint, and we're, that's one concern, and we're interested to understand why the setback needs to change, and we request that it be allowed to remain at the existing setback. So regarding the size, the, the proposed changes don't stay within the ordinance restrictions for the floodplain overlay district, um, the, the ordinance talks about enlargement of up to 25% of the ground coverage, and the existing dwelling is 692 square feet, and so 25% enlargement would be an increase to 865 square feet, and this one's proposed for more than 1,000 square feet, and then doubles and triples in, in height and so forth. So, um, the footprint doesn't include the porches, it decks, the stairs, um, at the moment, the deck, as, as Mr. Hardy just pointed out, goes out towards the marsh, isn't in anybody's way, but if they're gonna put it off the back, it's gonna come over in our direction and be on top of us, and so part of the, the height, the overall mass of the building is, um, within the variances, we can't do anything about that, but what we are worried about is the looming of that big, big, big building over, um, what has up until now been, been fairly private, um, areas at the end of, we're both at the end of the same dead end street. So whether or not the height qualifies for the 25% restriction, our concern is about mitigating the effect of the increased mass and ground coverage of this new building, and the effect it will have on our property in terms of shade, and shadow, and privacy, and sightlines, and looking at the blueprints, those, those rooms are gonna look right into our bedroom, and, um, not the way that this property has been. The setback at the, at the moment is, is in line with the existing neighborhood, uh, neighborhood. And regarding the second concern, so that's about the size, the second concern is about the setback, in the zoning ordinance is in section 412, it talks about buildings shall be set back so as to, I think the word is conform to the average alignment of the dwellings already on the same side of the street. And it, it is literally in line with its only next door neighbor, and all, with the exception of one, the rest of the way down, so our request would be to not push the setback back towards, um, our property line, which, if it's gonna be such a huge building, and there's a zoning ordinance being, of, of, of variance being given, um, at least it'd be back closer to the street where it is now, um...
So it's 30 feet right now from your, from your, from his property line, it's 29, 29 feet zero.
Okay.
You're, you're saying you wanna move that another 10 foot closer?
The other direction.
Yeah, bring him seven, seven feet off the street or something.
Right, that, I think that would make some sense, there doesn't, we're at the dead end of our street, and all of the other houses are, are on the same side of the street, or about the same depth back, and there's nobody across the street from that house, there's not any turnaround or parking or those kinds of issues that, so we don't understand why the setback, and it would frankly, um, honestly, I think it'd look better to be in line with the rest of the neighborhood, again, there's, there's one house that's a little farther back. It also then wouldn't approach over on to its only a butter, who's now the back of that house would be out of line with the neighborhood and overlooking their backyard too. So I think not having it set at back as far, um, particularly since they're moving the deck to the back, the way that it's drawn now, if they put that deck right by the garage, they're, depending on how big the deck is allowed for, they're gonna be pretty much sitting on our back fence, so that's our concern.
The deck is 23 feet right now from your, from your property, from his property line, from the end of his property line, he's 20 feet from the deck.
But that's a lot different than the, what, 50 feet, 40 feet, however far it is right now.
Oh, the, oh, yeah, the old house is a smaller house up front, correct.
Right, and so that's, that's our point, is that not only is it gonna be a, a monstrosity large house beyond what it is now, um, to then move it closer to this one, um, I, I don't think variances are supposed to be then a detriment to the neighborhood or the neighbors, and that's our request, is that the setback not be increased, um, because it'd probably look better, but it also would not be a detriment to the two abutters of this, the only two abutters of the house. So that's our request.
Thank you very much, Ms. Oll.
Thank you very much, and, um, happy for this, um, longer, uh, multi-page letter to be passed along to Mr. Hardy, and I, I thought it would have been, so.
No, we don't pass that along, that's for our information only.
I got it, okay, well, Mr. Hardy, if this would be helpful for you...
And, and I get it when I come into a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be sending letters for everyone around the country, it's like, it'd be bizarre. I give her enough work for the week, believe me.
Well, she seems like she does a lot of work.
She really does, she does, thank God we have her as our clerk. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Thank you, Ms. Oll. Anyone else wanna speak in favor? No one?
Not seeing any here.
You have any?
Citizen Rota.
This is DPDW comments from Page 23rd, but I don't know if it was ever read or not.
I don't even think it was ever read. Mr. Rota, go ahead.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Take an oath.
John Rota, 62 Bramwell Road.
John, do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, even though you've been on radio today?
I do.
Go ahead.
That, that, that was, there must be nobody calling, Mike. No, I, 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 I called first, and I, and I said, maybe I called the right, you know, the wrong number, they don't usually answer the phone when I call, so.
Oh, I see, my son pulled me up to tell me that you were on, I said, well, you know...
I, I briefly gone on, so it was, you know...
All right, well, go ahead.
They are great, what is it, Egan and Browning, they are great people.
Something like that, yeah.
Uh, but, but now you threw my brain away, okay, so...
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Next.
But basically, I was gonna say, um, I just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, what totally would be a detriment to the neighborhood is if you allow people to park on the street right at the end there, um, an emergency vehicle or a police officer's not gonna be able to turn around, so I wanna make sure, if you do allow a big development there, you gotta make sure they have adequate parking, so I'm, I'm not sure what the parking is.
Everyone froze, uh-oh.
But I... Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, but I mean, I was just saying, you just have to make sure that they have adequate parking, because there's no parking, um, on that street at the end, that would make no sense, um...
They have a driveway there, John.
So, but for everything else that I've seen, um, you know, that first person who spoke, I, I wanna give her a kudo, she, you know, if you wanna go buy the book, that's how the books are written, but, you know, the books are interpreted, um, differently, um, in the city of Quincy, this is unfortunately, this is the direction we're going to, and this is a, a mild project, this is gonna add new growth, and, you know, they're rebuilding Quincy, it's going house by house, so, um, I'm in favor of new growth and letting people who own land do what they, you know, have the rights to do with that land, this is a small ask on that thing you were just saying before, I think you gotta remember, um, you know, both sides, so right now, if I'm correct, you're taking away something that's wicked, non-conforming, it's almost a foot or two away from the line, and we were just trying to get it closer to more conforming, so I'm in favor of this, I don't think it's a bad project at all, thank you.
Thank you, John, is there anyone else in favor? No, don't see nobody. Call up out of hearing closed, I have a letter here, uh... That was read in February, I think, but, uh...
I can't remember.
I don't know if I read it, anyway, I'll read it again, "We reviewed this middle of the buffer reference project, our comments are as follows, specify how much in previous area will be increased due to the development, provide plans showing the layout of utility and grading. Three, upon completion of project, eligible plans need to be submitted, an elevation certificate is required if the property is in the flood zone. Anything further, please advise." Not important.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone opposed or undecided? First call?
Not seeing any here.
Second call?
Anita again.
Anita, you, you have your hand up?
I did, I just, I, I spoke during the, um, in favor section, uh, I'm sorry, I should be moved to the not in favor or requesting a change section, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, that's, that's, that's all, that's all noted, thank you very much. Sometimes I just, I thought you were in favor and you just wanted a couple things you wanted to talk about, so, okay, CNN, I'll call up out of hearing, third call? All our father hearing closed. Guys, uh, you might have a point there, that other houses are, they're up close, and, uh, maybe if we move this up this way 10 feet, as long as we're not interfering with the flood zone, which I wouldn't believe we would be, uh, 10 feet to the front, so they'll give them 39 feet in the back, almost 40 feet off, uh... And they still got, they still got a, a driveway, they got plenty of parking in the driveway. Is there any reason, let me speak to the applicant, is there any reason he had that 17 foot just for the 25 foot setback? Mr. Hardy? Unmute yourself, you'll be on.
I couldn't, okay, thank you, um, I think we were just trying to bring it more in line with what the setback requirements were and not ask for a bigger variance, if, if you were asking us to move it 10 feet forward, um, we can do that.
All right, now give you plenty of room in the back to get by and everything else, and, uh, right. And then you got your, your driveway there to park, so plenty of off-street parking. Thank you, any, anything else from, uh, the board members, any comments? I think it's a nice project, it's about time that place got cleaned up, uh, it's been a nice sort of a neighborhood, it'd be nice to have something new there, and if we move it up for the neighbors, you know, they're asking for that special permit, because it's over 25%, and, uh, I feel that's a nice, you know, 44 foot long house, yeah, it's a little big, but it's only, it's not wide, it's not this huge white house, so I'm not looking at a 40 by 80 house or something, 40 by 60, uh, I think it fits in the neighborhood nice, and if we move it a little closer, 10 feet, still seven feet off the street, any other comments by the members, Mr. Kavais?
No, I think that's a good idea, Mr. Chairman, that we move the house forward, there's plenty of room in the back, and it is a, the end of the road there, so to speak, so I'll think it's, uh, for the heartbeat, applicant.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, Mr. Chin?
I have no problem with moving it.
Okay, and Mr. Himmel, where, there he is, Mr. Himmel?
No, no problem at all, I think it's a great idea, and I think it'd be a nice addition to the neighborhood.
Have a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in case number 20-71, Gene Curran for a variance special permit floodplain to raise the existing structure and construct a new structure with less than required, but, yeah, well, yeah, it's just still less than required, front yard setback, uh, it'll be take the existing garage on the premises number 30 Elcott Road, I make a motion to grant the variance special permit, um, floodplain with the, uh, with the contingency of the plan, with the ability to be moved up 10 feet from what the current plan is.
And the conditions of, uh, conservation.
And conservation conditions.
Second it? Second it, can I, Madam clerk, can I have a roll call vote?
You sure can, Mike Kavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien? Ron Himmel?
Yes.
Are you here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you use my vote?
You got it.
It does.
We heard, I heard, I heard it call you, you didn't answer?
Oh, I didn't hear my name, sorry.
Oh, I heard it, Chin?
Yes, thank you.
I heard it call your name, I didn't hear you answer, but I heard it call your name, so I says, oh, okay, where are we here? We are at 29 Grove Street, Peter Rand manager for variance finding to subdivide the parcel and construct a single family home on the vacant lot, 29 Grove Street, is the app and the representative here.
Attorney, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming, um, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for hearing us this evening, uh, to remind the board, this was continued from a couple weeks ago, uh, to allow us to, with the assistance of Counselor Brian Palmucci, to have a neighborhood meeting, uh, we did have that, I'll, I'll talk about, a little bit about that, um, in, in a second, uh, just wanna give you some details on this particular proposal. So again, this is 29 Grove Street, um, this particular parcel consists of two lots, uh, that are both recorded, uh, with the registry of deeds, um, it is about 15,000 square foot parcel, currently improved by a single family residence that, um, uh, fronts both Grove Street, and not known to many, including myself, because I grew up in the neighborhood, it also fronts a, a proposed private way running from Grove Street through to Upton, which was never, never done, um, however, it's still, it still is adjacent to, uh, to that parcel. My client's proposal is to subdivide it, this property into the existing two lots, maintain the existing single family home at 29 Grove Street, um, not doing any, he's renovated that property already, so that's gonna stand how it is, uh, with proposed parking in the rear of that property, which is gonna be accessible, uh, via, uh, the private way, uh, which we felt was much safer, uh, if you know Grove Street at all, uh, it can be a little bit busy, it is kind of a curve right there too, so to have that kind of, um, the parking be, uh, accessible, uh, via the private way made more sense. Uh, the second parcel, uh, will be to the rear, uh, and will, will, uh, butt in front, uh, the private way, um, that particular proposed lot will be, um, over 9100 square feet in size, um, and, and building of a, of a modest, uh, a single family residence. Uh, if I can, forgive me, I'm gonna try to share my screen with you all, uh, with the, initially the site plan, uh, let me try to do that. Can you all see this plan?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so again, this is the existing, um, parcel here altogether, uh, roughly almost 15,000 square feet, uh, the home sits here, the private way again runs, uh, from Grove, was proposed to run all the way through to Upton Street, um, that was completely abandoned and not, and not done, um, you know, certainly these adjacent property owners have rights, um, to, to this way, um, so my client is proposing again to subdivide them into these two particular lots, bu- build this single family residence with a nice farmer's porch, accessible, again, uh, via Grove Street, uh, the private way, uh, to parking on site, um, uh, via the, the private way as well, so again, a real, a real modest home, it is a three-bedroom. real modest home. It is a three bedroom, three bath home. Um, but in, in, relative in size to uh, many of the homes or some of the homes are even larger in that area. Um, um, there's no conservation jurisdiction here. Uh, again, we did, to get back to the neighborhood meeting, we did have a nice meeting with a few neighbors. Um, and primarily the concerns were parking for this home. And they were concerned that this was, this way was going to go all the way through to Upton. Uh, that is not the case. In fact, my client is only paving half of the way to access the, the proposed home in the, in the rear. Um, so hopefully we, we kind of um, answered those concerns of those, of those neighbors. Um, to, to their satisfaction. You know, um, I think it was real confusing for many because even myself as a, as a child living up there, um, uh Lowell Street is down this way. We always thought on bikes, that was the only way out to Grove. Um, because this never, this never was built out. You know, so I think many people were kind of surprised that that even existed, um, honestly. So my client is just really using it as kind of a long drive. Um, uh, to, to the proposed home. Um, so that's really the presentation. Uh, if you have any questions that I can answer, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, I do. What about the tree ordinance? I see there's a ton of trees cut down back there.
Um, so we, I, we don't have a tree count. Uh, there are, there are a few eight inch diameter. Um, it, it, the, the lot itself being, you know, over 90, 9100 square feet, it does allow for my client to replant. Um, you know, some of these trees as well, and if not most of them. Um, uh, but again, I didn't have a tree count uh, for you. I don't believe they're all uh, you know, eight inch in diameter.
I, I don't, I don't know. I just went up and I looked at it a few times and uh, and then I says, you know what? Last time I was there, it looked like a lot of trees were cut up. And then I went up there again yesterday and I saw it again. And I says, yeah, I did remember all that. The trees were like, so.
And that, and that will, we'll have to, we'll have to assess that and, and certainly comply.
Okay. And then, and my other thing is, is, is the uh, the access of the private way. Uh, you know, the DPW, you gotta, you gotta get that approved by the BT, the DPW that you're going to conform to, whatever you need to do as a private way. Okay?
Absolutely.
Whatever that does.
Including drainage and all that as well.
Right, right. Okay. Uh, those are my questions. Mr. Cabas, any questions?
Uh, yes. So what's going to happen to this piece of land uh, behind the po, the asphalt, the posed asphalt? As neighbor, the neighborhood meeting was concerned about this going all the way up to Governor's Road. Is it, that would be continuation of that? Uh, and you only got to take half, you only got to pave half of that private way, I assume.
That's correct. Um, you know, as a, as an adjacent uh, property owner to a private way, there certainly are some rights to the midway point of that way. Um, you know, and primarily this is, this is only going to be used for access uh, to that. The other side, further up, further up close at Upton Street, nothing, nothing's going to be done to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien?
Which one?
You, Mr. O'Brien, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Russ. Uh, I have one question. Is this all one lot or was it two lots? Uh, that because of unity of ownership became one lot?
That's correct. That's correct. Uh, yeah, as I said, uh, everything online uh, recorded with registry deeds, it, it is two lots. Uh, but because of, of common ownership, they indeed have merged. And we, I've, I've had case, I've had numerous cases, um, uh, very similar to this, uh, where you had these two lots that um, were, were indeed non-conforming. Um, but same ownership and they merged uh, for that reason, for zoning purposes. So we're just asking for relief uh, to, to kind of divide these um, in only in the dimensions that exist today on record. Um, and we're requesting little relief um, for this lot here. It'll be the, just the lot size that we're kind of creating uh, with respect to this L-shaped lot. Um, and the only relief I'm really requesting here because of its shape um, is just the width, the overall width. You know, we have the, we have more than enough frontage. However, um, if you get into width calculation.
29, right.
You technically don't have it, you know?
And, and who owns the adjacent lot there? It's, it's not the same owner, correct? Adjacent to 29 on Grove? Yeah.
Uh, different owner.
Yeah, but is it, is, is that in a butter? Do they?
That's in a butter. That's in a butter. Yes.
I mean, does the, does, if we continue up, does that go on that goes to 4092, nine dash nine to the right again? Is that the same owner? The other way?
This one here?
Yeah, keep going. Is that owned by the, is that owned by the way you are now?
This is not owned, no, this is not owned by my, no, it's just, it's this uh, L-shaped in red.
No, follow me.
He's asking, is this one and this one combined? Are these two here?
This one and this one.
No.
No, no, no.
Well, you're right.
This one here own this piece here too?
Yeah. Is that one where you are owned by the property owner who owns the one on the right?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
And who owns this one here? You don't know that? One up by him? No, way up here where my, my, my cursor is.
They can't see your cursor. They can't see.
They can't see your cursor.
Oh, I can't see it. I thought, I was showing them. I'm showing them something they can't see. What the heck was this?
Are you talking, are you talking about up here?
No.
Down a little bit, down.
Right there.
Uh, they, they know the neighbor and have spoken to the neighbor, but I don't, I don't know who that is.
No, I, I'm, I'm curious about the ownership of these other lots.
Well, they don't own this piece of property, so, and they're not connected to these properties.
Yeah, these are, these are separate lots. So, okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Chin?
No questions yet.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Himmel?
So on the existing house lot, it says proposed parking here. Isn't that already been paved with pavers?
No.
I don't, I don't think so. Um, if my client.
I didn't see that. Uh, question is where are they parking now?
Uh, I, I think, I think really they're parking, I want to say here.
No.
He might have put all.
Away or, or over here.
No, they park.
They can't park there. There's a wall.
See where that proposed parking is in the first, the one, the existing right here?
Yeah.
That's all done. That's all covered.
Okay, okay.
They have, they have, they have pavers in there all the way. And that's where they parked for that house. I was talking to the woman that owns this house. I think her brother owns this lot. And I think she's moving into this new house. She told me she'd like.
That's correct. Yeah, he, he rented, my client renovated this home recently.
She's moving into the new house and then they're going to sell this house is what she told me. Now, I don't know if she's going to sell that house or keep the house in the family. I have no idea, but her brother's building this house and she's going to move in, she said. That's what I was told.
Building it for family. That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Himmel?
No.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Will we get back? Will we get back, John? Thank you.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, no, no. It's fine.
Citizen Rotifell.
Citizen Rotifell.
Right.
He already took an oath, John. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm in favor of this project. I just wanted to um, um, speak again. I don't think I'll speak again of anything else, but I mean, this Fleming always has the best project. It's his brother that has the bad project, so.
I respectfully disagree.
I mean, you can almost trust if Rob has it, it's a pretty decent project. If it's a, you know, so-so one, then it's the other guy.
It's a good guy.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, you know, um, a couple more things before, and I promise if I continue speaking, I promise not to speak anymore. Um, but my poor cat roster, I had to put her to sleep on June um, 2nd. And um, you know, she came to many of the meetings and she actually was a big fan of very dense development. And um, you know, she, you know, will truly be missed. And you know, I actually did speak on WBUR on 89.7. They were on the radio today talking about Zoom meetings. I was the first person that go speak. And when I basically said that, you know, I, I miss, you know, one, one of the things, they didn't let me speak because I'm like, you know, you guys here, they cut me off like immediately, you know, um, you guys do let me continue and ramble and ramble and ramble. And I appreciate you letting me ramble.
And you still yell at me, right, John?
Well, the last month, I had a tough month with my sick cat, so.
Hell, you did.
You, you do.
Anyway, buddy, can you do me a favor? Give me your address, John?
It's um, 62 Grenwall Road. But one of the great things about having the meetings at home is that you can be there with your cat. And you could be there with a loved one. You can be there if someone's still sick. So you still are able to communicate. And the thing I do miss is after a meeting, um, you know, the precious moments I would get with Chairman Duka, he would speak to me or I'd get to talk to Mr. Fatsis. Um, that's the part they didn't, you know, allow me to say, or Chairman Akins, you know, after a meeting, I, you know, we would talk after a meeting, that little chit chat, that camaraderie and stuff. I hate when the meeting just ends. And you know, on your meeting, I get anxious every meeting because, you know, it's always like, hey, did someone ring the bell? I mean, but I always know for sure that it's going to stop before 5:40. So um, I love Quincy. It's an interesting city. It's great. It's changing. And you know, we need this new growth um, to pay for the taxes. So um, thank you very much. And you guys do a great job.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else wanting to speak in favor? Anyone? Second call?
Not seeing any more hand.
Third call, call our part of the hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW. dated April 20th, 2021, 29 Grove Street, case number ZB82116. We reviewed this middle of the above reference project. Our comments are as follows. One, specify how much in previous area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, grading, drainage and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, provide dimensions and grades for paving area on all driveway entrances. Five, upon completion of the project, as will plan showing all utilities. Building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. Further information is required. Please advise. Uh, anyone, we'll call our part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call?
Not seeing.
All right. I have two letters here that I'm, I'm not going to read them all. I'm just going to give you the upgrades here. Thank you very much for the announcement, 29 Grove Street. Respectfully, my husband and I asked the city Quincy zoning board of appeals and neighborhood and friends to deny this application, Mr. Peter Tran, PT Investments. Uh, so.
Council Mahoney has her hand up.
Wait a minute. Let me finish. All right.
The name is up in the top corner.
Uh, it's Linda Semperary 157 Bates Street. I have another letter here from James O'Larry, 115 Bates Street. Uh, dear board members, I understand the board's holding meetings, 29 Grove Street. I have given the proposal a lot of thought. The more I think about it, the less I think it is right for our neighborhood. Basically, single family homes on medium sized lots. We are not crowded together like other Quincy neighborhoods. We extremely low on police calls, but yeah, we just don't want another home built there. That would be on the record. Uh, Council Mahoney?
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I did actually join the public hearing um, that Council Palmucci had in regards to this development. And there was um, almost all, all the butters that were there, um, with the exception of one who was, he got a letter and he's not actually on the street. He's pretty far. He's, he's down on Bryan Ave, where opposed to this, this um, development. Um, some of the questions that came up was also electrical, how the electrical would be pulled into the back lot because um, it's, it's, it's non-conforming and they're not sure how they're going to be able to access the electrical. I don't think they were able to answer that question that night either. Another concern that they had was that the um, access road is going to be a single um, single way road. And um, current, current people living there, it's like a long driveway. So um, it's not truly a road, a long driveway, access points. It's coming onto a busy, um, Grove Street's very, very busy. And um, the next door neighbor to the, if you're standing on the street looking at the house, I think to the left, um, had a lot of problems with the, the house that was currently just redone. So there was a lot of opposition that night. And I just wanted to make sure that the neighborhood um, was able to be represented in that sense, that the, that they're not in favor of, of this particular um, this particular development.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Anyone else? Second call? Anyone have their hand up? Third call?
No hand.
There's a hand there. John Doran? Oh, are you, John, are you going to speak this?
Yes.
Okay. Uh.
John, do you swear to tell the truth, the house truth, the truth will help you, God?
I do.
Thank you, John.
John, you have the floor.
Good evening. How you doing?
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Name and address for the record.
John Doran, 35 Grove Street, Quincy, Mass.
Okay. You have the floor, John.
I've been dealing with Mr. Tran for a couple of years. Um, he's taken all the trees in the back, run a few trees down.
Yep.
He's um, he paved the uh, private way. He's, he's also um, on this private way. He changed the 29 Grove Street. Um, he made an area for parking. But I've noticed that um, my wall is six feet from this so-called private way.
Mm-hmm.
So when he um, there's been a lot of um, automobiles, shall we say, in this private bay in the evening. And it's right under my, it's right under my windows on the side of my house. Um,
Would you say there's cars parked there or driving up and down?
There are cars in the evening that are parked on this private way.
Okay.
And if you, you would never get a, and this is before they want to build a house back there.
Yeah.
You'd never be able to get a fire engine in there of nothing.
Right.
Um, it's, it, it's not a good idea. It really isn't a good idea. I'm losing my yard. He.
What's going on with your wall there? You said something with your wall?
My wall? I got a, the old stone wall. From, from the stone wall to this private way, the driveway they have to come in is six feet. My house is six feet from corner of my house to this wa, uh, private way is six feet.
Yeah.
Saying the cars come in in the evening.
Yep.
They park in the private way. They do not park up in the driveway.
Yeah.
But in Grove Street.
If they build this house, they can't be parking here because that's a private way. And they're going to pave the whole street. So they, they, they can't have people parking on.
No kidding?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, you know, I'm, but they write and taught me, I can't do anything. You're taking a lot of the land away.
Yeah. And you don't want them parking there. And if, if they don't build a house, they'll use it as their parking lot 29 would, right? You'd have to call and get them towed or whatever.
Yeah, was it, he's using this private way right now.
Yeah.
And I know I, that his 29 Grove, he made for four cars. It's normally four to seven cars in the evening until the next morning.
In that one house?
In this 29 Grove Street.
There's four to seven cars?
You got it. In the evening. And I know because I hear the cars coming in at night and my living room window is right there. I just have to look out and there's the cars. They're less than six feet to my house.
Yeah, every time I was there was during the day or at late afternoon, five o'clock or something. Well, I've been there three times, I think.
Right.
And there were.
I'm the house, I'm the blue house to the left. I've been there for 36 years, 36 years.
Right.
So I can't imagine putting a house back there. And I thought, I thought Mr. Tran, I thought he was, the last meeting we had, he was coming from, I believe, Situate. And he was moving to this house that he was going to build with his family. So now it's other families coming in or his family. He said it was.
I was told the woman that's in 29, I was told from her that she's moving into the new house. They're going to build them back. That's what she told. I was told the woman that's in twenty-nine I was told from Laura that she's moving into the new house they're gonna build them back that's what she told is that true I I don't know
well the meeting
only takes someone out of their word
the meeting on the thirteenth he said he was building the house for his family and that's why we questioned it you're coming from I think he lived in situate hangham and he was moving back there with his family and he's changed in the rules again
yeah okay
this house has had you know this house has had a lot of violations with this Mr. Tran I've been dealing with um I was dealing with Miss Nugent Kathleen Nugent Inspector for the last two years when he did this driveway he tore him he tore the driveway up and he picked up these big boulders he threw them out in the back so we can't move these boulders
right
you know
right
he's just been aggravating I was verbally attacked with him one day and we had it out there in the backyard so he has his own boundaries shall we say
yeah yeah
I don't think it's a good idea you're gonna have to put an electrical sewer and then they tear up that driveway to put all this sewer and where these people gonna park at twenty-nine won't be able to get up the private driveway because it's not big enough it's not big enough for you know all these cars I just don't want I don't want to be backing up coming
one side and do the other side uh anything else Mr. John
no sir I'm done
thank you very much for your time and thank you for logging on today
thank you very much
questions Mr. Duka uh is there is there anyone else opposed or undecided on anyone else give us a high five sign star seven wave do something no okay we'll call that part of the hearing close Mr. Duka on the private way that he's putting it doesn't he have to pave the whole private way not just twelve fourteen feet for a car doesn't he have to do the whole road
so you have to have access you have to have frontage on a on a road you have to have practical access
right
so you can have as long as you got footage you can have at least twenty feet of practical access
so if he's got twenty foot wide he can pave twenty feet up so a fire engine can get up
well the fire engine is a different story but uses the fight upon doesn't weigh in at least unless it's a subdivision
yeah yeah I know what you're saying because you've got different things and movements
generally when when a when a road is more than a hundred and fifty feet long they do like to see a cul-de-sac or something like that
at the end
at the end but
there's no room
we got plenty of roads like this
right that end right right back up they just back up while the fight upon they could stop the traffic and stuff to get out of course
yeah as long as they can get there
I wanna make sure I can get in and get up there and the electrical uh what the council is saying uh they're gonna have to either bring it in the road up or they're gonna have to bring it overhead up there too uh and they'll have to put another pole and he'll have to pay for that it's private property and have to pay for that one thing that bothers me is we're talking about uh all these trees removed with with nothing being said no one taking photos no one saying how many's gone how many gonna be put back when what if this house don't get built then then who who goes and rips down all these trees before before anything's approved I don't I don't know how that's done when I was seeing a tree yard
the tree yardage doesn't apply you can cut trees on your property
alldone
you can cut them all down if you're building it's when you're building a home or an addition where you have to contribute in you're regulated by the tree yard
so if you're not if you're not gonna you're not gonna build a home you can cut down every tree in the lot I always thought you couldn't I always thought you I always thought I say I never thought that I always thought if you had so many trees you had to have keep so many or replant just just on building
tree yardage only regulates when you're building a room by right or if you're going to if you're getting released
so he could have chopped them all down and that would have been fine then when he wants to build
it's when you build yeah and you know what after a year you can chop it down if it's a way to year
chopping out way to year
yeah
who knows how long it's been right and you know uh let's talk about where we are now I mean I was worrying about that road going up does he have to pave the whole thing so what is that like he has to whatever the DPW says he has to pave
whether it's curves sidewalks whatever the standards are
okay
you have to street lighting
okay all right all right uh any questions on the board for for Mr. Duka with some of these things that were brought up or Mr. Cabeas
you know I always feel that this private way thing really sometimes doesn't make a lot of sense to me
I know
you know you have rights to halfway to it but the right of way is twenty-five feet wide
right
and he's how are we gonna be able to if I understand this correctly uh pave half of that and we have a lot of cars going there and um
yeah it's not gonna work
everyone has to use this private way both houses and we have six parking spaces but we have a neighbor who says that there's more cars than that now
so right four and seven
well I guess by the lecturing here my point is to uh Mr. Fleming is there another way to address this I mean the this seems like uh
can't we put them in the conditions pave that whole road twenty-five feet wide
yes the thing to remember with private ways although you only have up to halfway
right
you still have to provide access to the public
okay
so that would include the whole
all right so he's gonna have to Mr. Duka says he's gonna have to pave that whole road
so but the other half is you can't pave because the neighbor has
no he's gonna no he's gonna pave the whole road if we put it in our condition but he has to do it anyway if he's gonna make a private way he has to have public access which is the whole road he has to pave not just half it gotta pave that whole road twenty-five feet whatever it is
so if I'm Mr. Duran
yeah
and I say no I have the right to that
yeah yeah
so are we are we are we taking away Mr. Duran's rights
no because what we're saying to him is you well for his house that's there yeah probably but if he wants a new house we have that right to say to him if you want the second home you will do this as a condition plus he says Mr. Duka says he has to do it by law because he has to give public access to that he has to have a fire state fire truck go up there and all that and and if it's in a a dead end he's supposed to have a cul-de-sac and we have so many in Quincy that don't have cul-de-sac for from turn around he's only backing up twenty-five feet of course they can you know the fire department can stop stop traffic they just stand in the middle of the road it's over right
Mike you brought it you're making a very good
he is we take that away his
that yeah Mr. Duran wants to use that half to build you know grow tomatoes uh
well I I think all my understanding is and you make a good point my my understanding is although people own half half the road they still have to provide public access for emergency vehicles so that would include the whole road and I don't I don't know and and you're right I I've seen some people build retaining walls out into the private way however um my understanding is you still gotta you still gotta have access for emergency
the last time that somebody encroached upon somebody's abandoned road path they'd ended up in Superior Court and they were told to move their shit so so how does it how does so how does this project trump Mr. Duran's twelve and a half feet
he doesn't
we're not we're not proposing to we're not proposing anything that's gonna obstruct anybody's access
not access
that's why that's why the private way is actually originally um established you know for access there was a planned uh intent to connect Grove uh with with Upton Street and I see it all over the city of Quincy these ways are abandoned over time
and when they're abandoned officially does that not make the butters on the left and right owner of twelve of of half of of that private way
no it's still a private way it's not an accepted way by the city of Quincy it's a private way it still exists and they have certain rights to the midway section of that particular way um Mr. Tran is paving what he has rights to to access this this home you know um none of the none of the the rest of the private way has has never been approved so he's not my my opinion he's not obligated to 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 pave the entire a way up to the front of his home you know he's paving what he has rights to for access to that home
so other words Council what you're saying Mr. Fleming what you're saying is
he's gonna pave fifty
yeah we're but pave half twenty-five feet
yeah
and that's it
no way
that's correct
no how does a fire truck get up there if someone someone gets a flat tire on a private how where's the truck go you pull up and your car break what do you do if it there's no pavement what does he do ride through ride through what
uh I there could be there could be a requirement there could be a requirement by DPW and they will look at this whether or not he has to run a hydrant up uh in front of his home as well
right 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 any other concerns Mr. Himmel I mean Miss Chin him Mr. Chin's first right
sorry Ma you have sorry Ma you have Council Mahoney their hand up here
now wait a minute we're we're on discussions now the hearing's over uh John I'll get back to you and go ahead John
I'm just I guess I said I I'm concerned on um it it's a right of way it's it's not an accepted we've seen previously in court where people have have exceeded and encroached on those ways and Superior Court has ruled in favor of the person who's being encroached um that's that's just one of the problems I see with this but that please go forward gentlemen
all right Mr. Chin
if I if I may say
hold on hold on Councilor hold on Mr. Chin
if uh if the if the if the board is concerned about the legalities of this we may want to defer to get an opinion from Corporation Council on uh on the issues that we're concerned about before we before we uh vote
and and that's what I wanted to do anyway I just wanna see if there's any other concerns and I was gonna ask that if we could put this off and let's let's talk to uh the city the city solicitor and see what he says about this and let's talk to the DPW if he's gonna have to pave that whole road which I wouldn't wanna see a house up there without that whole road and and that's gonna be on the applicant and and if it isn't maybe we got another decision uh Mr. O'Brien did I get to you yet I'm sorry
no you didn't the the question I have is that we don't know how far the the private road goes back is what we're saying
well we're gonna say right to their parking is what we would want right you'd want him to pave all the way up to at least his pocket
yeah we're not talking about the pavement I'm talking about how far the private way exists
it was proposed to go all the way through to Upton Street that's on that's on record
and so there's a Jase there's a there's another group of abutters then as you as you continue up the road right
right
yep and they have rights and they have and they have rights to the midway point by them and I think people have built people have built uh Mr. Kimball's point people have built on that end of this private way right in the middle of the of the way so those cases that you're referring I don't know them specifically or the facts um but people were building sheds or what have you in the middle of the way my client's not doing that my client is providing access to the proposed home
we're not saying that we're not saying that Council what we're saying is he's gonna only pave half of the road correct
correct
correct that's what he's saying I have a problem with that
and I'd like to ask Mr. Duker to elaborate on the um on the issues that the gentleman that lived next door had with the rocks and was is he were you aware of those
I think we should talk to him to take another look at him too and see what's going on with that rock wall and what happened when they built it if something happened to his property I don't know that was the first I've ever heard of
I'd like to just say one thing
me too
I'm not an attorney obviously but from a zoning matter he needs to provide he needs to improve the road needs to provide practical access to his lot which is twenty feet he has to have frontage on on the uh on the road that's all I'm concerned about is that emergency vehicles get there all the other questions you're asking are real are valid and
we could we yeah we could we could figure it out but that's you know you want to be able to get emergency vehicles to this house up that road so let's why don't we do this we'll let Ian Mahoney speak but I'd like to see if if you guys all agree make a motion to come back in a couple of weeks I'll sit with the city solicitor whoever wants to come with me uh you're welcome all of you if you wanna and we can go up there and just see what his opinion is if you want me and Mr. Cabeas uh me and Mr. Chin couple attorneys go up there one with one anyway with me uh
need more attorneys right Mike
that's right never enough
yeah uh I don't know how's that sound
I I think Mike you should go up there after after seven or eight because there are cars parked up and down that right away now
yeah I will I will I will because I I will I'll go up there tonight as a matter of fact that's crazy but I want them so he might not be parked there I don't know uh Ian Mahoney go ahead second time meeting's over
I I apologize I just wanted to mention too that we're we're basing this off of somebody who's gonna build a home and supposedly stay in it eventually the home will be sold and the private ways become problems when the homes are sold so I just wanted to make sure
yeah of course
I I just but I know but so many times developers will tell you that they're gonna stay in the home and then they sell it and the bigger problems come afterwards so I just want to mention that as well and thank you very much
they'll tell you that I'm building it for my sister and then the house is full once it's built right happens all the time in this
it should have no relevance
it should have no relevance but at the same time I just it I I just wanna make sure for mentioning that and that it's a single it's a single paved road and it's and they're already parking on it so I thank you for the discussion thank you very much
thank you Council uh so why don't we make a motion and move this a couple of weeks and let's find out some answers from the uh people up above us how's that sound all right
what's a what's a good date
uh I know the twenty-second we already heard the heard it's just our decision so it won't gonna take long when we get a what we know as long as we get the information the twenty seconds really booked booked but I know he wants to get moving so let's do it the twenty-second
okay great Chairman Amendment number twenty-one dash sixteen Peter Tran manager for a variance finding submitted by the parcel to disrupt a single family home on the vacant lot on the premises number twenty-nine Grove Street I make a motion to continue the hearing to June twenty-second
second could I have a roll call votes since we've had the hearing
yes Michael Cabeas
yes
Charlie O'Brien
John Day
Russell Chin
yes
you say
John Himmel
yes
Cardi Akin
yes
thank you
thank you gentlemen uh we'll get back to you in two weeks on that anyone that wants to tune in we'll be here on the new business Jeffrey Peyton for variance to expand the deck ten feet on the premise number thirty-six Town Hill Street is the applicant here
yes
and what did you find out for us that we're supposed to have a letter here we don't have I'm supposed to find out from your uh condo association what your rights were
no I I don't believe there was a follow-up on that um I'm working directly with the builder of the condo they're actually building three units across the street as we speak um the condo association is being managed by the builder currently
and you have a letter from the builder saying you can do that
uh no but I can I can get one
all right guys it's up to us and I talked to uh Mr. Dukel and the rules and 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 something we can do of course uh we can vote yes if his condo association gives him a letter he can do it if they don't that's up to him to get an association letter or the people can just have it taken down so of the association so uh it's up to us to say yay or nay on his deck he wants to increase the deck to ten feet I think you got a piece of property there he wants to put another little bigger deck out there to have more outside living I'd be voting in favor of it but everyone in one opinion whatever so any comments on this at all Mr. Cabeas
well it is something that if I I wasn't clear to me last meeting that the uh the golfer hadn't yet uh turned over the association I know that there's some legal things that the developer would have to do in order to grant this but again maybe it's not our problem so sure let's I'll be in favor of it and uh see what happens but not 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 in our control
well that's what I I think I think we're looking at like you know he's gonna go do his thing with his association and it's that they he could keep he could keep that association until until they whatever that could be ten years twenty years who knows
well if he sells the units the developer doesn't have they have to give up
yeah they 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 cut it loose pretty quick
if they want it right sometimes they don't wanna hang in uh Mr. O'Brien
yeah I I again I'm not familiar with the condo stuff so Yeah, I, I, again, I'm not familiar with the condo stuff, so, um, I, I defer to the attorneys to see what, you know, what they believe and think the rights are. If they, if it's owned by the, if it's owned by the developer now and he's, there's no condo association and he gives them permission, I think we would have to agree.
Right. I don't know, Mr. Chin?
I believe it's a private right with the condo association that probably takes precedent like what Charlie was saying, as long as it doesn't encroach. So I'm, I'm okay with the, the deck at this point in time.
Okay. And Mr. Himmel?
I'm okay with it. There's no condo covenants. We, that does exist today, so whatnot.
Right. All right, can I have a motion, please, Mr. Cabeas?
This is the Chairman. Amendment number 21 dash 27. Jeffrey Payton for a variance to expand the existing deck up to 10 feet on the premises number 36 Town Hill Street and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Michael Bayes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes. Thank you. Further into tonight's agenda.
21 dash 29.
Yeah. I know, is that, uh, did we move that earlier? Now, okay, this is one, here it is. And that was one I was gonna ask you if we had it tonight, because it wasn't on my other list, it's on this list. Uh, yeah, I'm back. Deborah Collins for variance to install a Walmart sign on the premises number 122 Granite Street, move from 525, is the absentee representative here. Counselor? Representative? Anyone give me a high sign? Amy, Amy, you have the floor, name and address. Are you a counselor?
Uh, how you doing, guys? Hello, my name's Jamie Fisher, I'm with ID Sign Group.
All right, hold on. Uh, Mr. Bayes, could you give my notes, please?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Amen.
Okay, you have the floor, Jamie.
How you doing, guys? Thanks for the opportunity, um, to discuss this. Wall sign, our client is proposing that we install a 36-inch internally illuminated, 3-inch-deep, um, translucent-faced rondelle that displays a red capsule with a vehicle inside. Um, to the right of that capsule will be some dimensional acrylic, um, letters that are mounted, uh, onto 3-inch standoffs, uh, on buildings facade.
You what?
Um, the overall image.
And if I turn the camera?
This is 36 inches. Someone got a mute dim. Someone's talking here, I can hear.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't catch that.
You're up.
Yep, so the overall image area is roughly 104 inches by 36 inches tall, resulting in approximately 26 square feet of copy. Um, as mentioned, the, uh, the image and the sign area will be flush mount to the, um, building's, uh, facade. And it will be, uh, installed to the left of the front entrance. Is there anything furthermore that the board would like to know in terms of the specific illumination type, et cetera?
How many signs are on that building now?
So there's currently signs facing the, um, highway. And then there are, there are two signs located just above the storefront entrance. One is the Star Market sign, the other is a, um, a subsidiary, or I, I guess a tenant of Star Market and that's Starbucks.
Starbucks. So it's this, it's two on the highway, right? So they got two off the.
Yep, two on the highway and two on the primary entrance.
Right.
Uh, both duplicates of one another.
Right, and then you got this one here going up, just a, is just drive up and go is what it's trying to tell the patrons to come up and park here?
Yes, sir. Well, it's more suggestive to the, um, to introducing the new contactless grocery shopping experience, which was in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's not necessarily saying park right here directly under the sign, but it is, uh, soliciting and promoting the implementation of this new service that's being offered by Star Market.
It's all, that's all it's about. It's not going and having parking spaces out in that certain area just for them driving ghosts?
There are specific designated parking areas. Um, there are six. I might have a rendering of where they're proposed to go, however, that's beyond our scope of purview. That's being contracted out to another construction company.
And then they putting signs out in the lot? Little teeny ones?
They'll put small post and panel signs similar to that of a handicap parker sign, um, signifying.
Pandemic's over, why are we doing all this?
So this is a new service that I think is just kind of being implemented across the industry and many grocery stores. Um, I, I think it's kind of just the, the new norm.
It, it really is, I'll tell you. You know how many people just thought of everything online now and they just go pick it up and really, it's, it's, it's a different world now.
It's.
People don't want to go out and shop, want to look online and do stuff, right? Uh, Mr. Any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
And Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
Thank you. Uh, do anyone want to speak in favor on this issue? Small sign for the, uh, Star Market. First call?
Not seeing any hands, Marty.
Second call, third call, closed. I got a letter here. Says from the DPW, May 11th, 122 Granite Street, case number ZB82119. We have reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, second call? Show anybody? No? Three times called. A lot of part of the hearing closed. I know it's a number of signs and they get two small signs and, and I'll tell you, I don't know who's running it up there now, but that store has changed so drastically classy. Whoever's running it's doing a fantastic job. I'm gonna tell you, I was in there a couple of times this year and I was really impressed. I was impressed by everything they, they've done over there. Uh, completely different store, just from the Star Market that I knew years ago. Um, I always stopped at Stop and Shop and now I stop at both of them. This place is really awesome, I like it. Anyway, uh, I think he's doing a good business and he's trying to run a real nice business and I see where he's going with it. I'd be voting in favor. Mr. Cabeas?
You're voting in favor, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Brien?
I'm not a favor, I'm not a fan of signs, but, uh.
I'm not either.
But the, um, with this new challenge here, I'll vote in favor.
Mr. Chin?
In favor.
And Mr. Himmel?
I'm not crazy about signs either, but I, you know, if this helps keep business and keeps Star Market, Shaw's opening Quincy, so we have two major supermarkets, I'm, I'd be approving it.
Okay, could I have a motion, please, Mr. Cabeas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, amendment number 21 dash 29, Deborah Collins for variance to install a Walmart mounted sign on the premises number 122 Granite Street and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Have a roll call vote, madam.
Yeah, Michael Bayes?
Yes.
Elliot O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes. Further on to tonight's business, ZBA.
Ball set.
2131, Sophia Menos for variance to rebuild the deck that was torn down in 2016 and construct a 6-foot fence in front of the premise 73 Summit Ave, is the absentee representative here.
Awesome, thank you guys, appreciate it. Due to the process, I apologize. Thank you, guys.
That's all right, thank you. 73 Summit?
Yep, I'm here.
Uh, okay, uh, Mr. Cabeas, could you swim in, please?
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Both ears? Yes, okay. Go ahead, go on.
You have the floor, tell us what you would like to do.
Well, um, what we want to do is rebuild a deck that got torn down a couple of years ago. Um, and in addition, we want to, uh, put a fence up, um, in our yard, kind of correcting, creating a almost like a rectangle on the side of our lot in between us and our neighbors at 67, simply because we're on a corner lot and we don't have a backyard. We have a two-year-old son and he keeps kind of trying to jet to the street, so I try to want to, I want to keep him contained.
Now, how come you want a 6-foot fence? I was just wondering, you're in a nice property.
We do, so we, I mean, we want a little more privacy. Again, we're on a corner lot, so we don't really have much of that. Um, and the other thing is that, uh, we used to have a pretty big dog. We had a boxer mix before that could dump fences and we intend on getting another dog soon and we just want to make sure that, you know, if we're going through, uh, you know, getting the variance already, that we want to have a fence there for when we have our big dog again.
Yeah, so you put it in the, in the front of the house, to your neighbor's house, right here in the corner?
Yeah.
But would that obstruct anyone coming up to that corner?
No, not at all, because it would be, if you're looking at the house from, um, from Summit Ave, um, looking straight on, it would be in between, um, us and our neighbor at 67. So it wouldn't be on the corner at all. It would be on the right-hand side of the house. I could be sure.
If you're back more than 10 feet, you're gonna start that fence from the corner, correct?
I, I don't follow. What?
From the corner where you pull up to the corner?
Yeah.
You're gonna be further than 10 feet back.
Oh, yeah, it would definitely be further than 10 feet from the corner.
All right, as a matter of fact, I just grabbed this from the DPW when I asked that question, the clerk gave me this.
Okay.
And they went about the same effects on pulling out of the street.
Oh, uh, could we share our screen for a second and then we'll try to.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we don't have a problem with people trying to come out of there and not be able to around the corner.
So, I'll let my husband take over.
Yeah, can you guys see the screen, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, this would be the corner, I think, that you guys are referring to, the corner of Pine.
Yes.
So this actually, we're green lined, this is where we want the fence, so it'd be on the opposite side and it wouldn't be in the entire front part, it's just that basically up into where the house starts. So this would effectively make like a little side yard. As you can kind of see from the aerial view, we don't really have much yard otherwise.
And that's your prop, of course, it's all on your property line, that one that's right next to the neighbor's house?
Yeah.
That's, that's your property line?
Yep, it, it goes just, yep, right there.
So he's on the property line almost.
Yeah, I mean, this is like a very like rough drawing, but we're obviously gonna do it like on the property line, not in.
Gotta be 10 feet back? Yep. The variance, do that fence, right. Right, I, I, right, and it's just, it's just the, right, and it's, it's back from the corner, right? So, uh, like you say, see, see the bottom of that fence where the short piece is by the street? If you were 10 feet back, you could build that by right without a variance.
Right, yeah, it just, I mean, we don't have much yard, so we're trying to, we're trying to go further, because otherwise it's gonna be kind of clunky, like to, to stop at 10 feet back.
Yeah. Yep. So you're about 35, 40 feet back from the corner, anyway, 40 feet back.
There's no driveway, he's got a driveway.
Right, his driveway's on the other side, that's.
Yeah, driveway's right here.
All right. All right, if you could put the screen back, there'd be, any questions of, uh, Mr. Cabeas, any questions?
No, I have, I have no questions.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no, I think it's a little tough for the neighbor there. There doesn't seem to be any room at all to get to that, or garden on the side there.
Yeah. Mr. Chin?
Oh, there's gonna be a 6-foot-high fence right up against the sidewalk there, right where the street is?
Yeah, it's on this, this side of the sidewalk, correct. Now that, now, we own, oh, 10 back feet, they, if they were 10 back feet, but they wouldn't, that would, they, that's what they don't want. They want their bigger yard for their kid.
I understand, 6 feet's a little bit high to be right up against the street, though, I don't know.
So you want it 4 feet on that, just that edge?
Wouldn't look right if it was 6 on two sides and 4 on the other.
Well, you can, you can go up in the, in the corners, you can go up and bring it down, you know?
Same. I just think it's a little bit of a wall, almost, right up, right up on the street.
Yeah.
At 6 feet.
Right.
That's all.
All right, all right, I hear you. Mr. Himmel?
What kind of fence, Chris, that's gonna be? Wood, metal, plastic?
Um, honestly, we haven't quite picked out the fence, but it's probably either gonna be, uh, wood or, um, like the vinyl, like the vinyl.
So no kid can climb through?
Right, yes. Or, or a dog jump over it too, that's the other thing for us.
All right, uh, yeah. I don't know, I think, I think, I don't know, I, I, I a 6-foot fence right against that, Mr. uh, Chin brings up a, a, a good idea. It's kind of a lot, it's like a 6-foot. So you're gonna have these 6-foot sticking right out of these two yards, coming right out with a 6-foot high on the end. Why couldn't you put the 6-foot's coming out, drop it down to 4 feet? So it's not like just this massive wall.
No, I understand what you're saying, but the, the big thing for us is due to like the way that our lot is constructed, we don't really have much privacy at all, um, in the backyard, uh, because right now, you can see from the way that our lot is, we really don't have a backyard at all. So what we're trying to do is just kind of create a little more privacy as well.
Little patio in the back?
Yeah, well, we, uh, that's, that's the thing, with the deck being built, um, then we also just want to be able to have a place for our kid to run around to, so.
All right, can I make a, ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
It looks like, with what you just showed us, that the fence is gonna go right up to the street. Is there some way of pushing it back off the street a little bit, so it doesn't look like there's a wall right on the?
Like 2 feet?
Well, there's actually a sidewalk, right? It, it would go up to the sidewalk and then there's the sidewalk and then the street, so it's not really right up to the street, there's probably.
Well, I mean, the sidewalk to me is the street.
Well, people walking down the sidewalk, they got this box sticking out.
Right. I mean.
It doesn't, it doesn't look like the Wallaston Hill that, you know, the rest of Wallaston Hill doesn't have a, a wall right on top of the street.
Yeah.
Or sidewalk, as you say.
Right.
So I guess like how, what are you guys proposing? Because I, obviously, we don't have a ton of yards, that's why we, we're, we're variance, not to have to go a full 10 feet back, right?
Well, I, I understand that of people living on a corner. I live on a corner.
Yeah.
I have no privacy. I understand that. Uh, so I'm not saying I'm against the fence, I'm just saying I'm against the fence, perhaps looking like a wall, uh, right up to the sidewalk.
Right.
So maybe 3 feet back a little bit, you know, so it doesn't look like it's a wall, maybe put some, some hedges in front of it or something?
It's a good idea.
There you go. Some plantings.
Yeah.
The plantings, yeah, whatever, you know, it's just so, uh.
You have 3 feet you could spare back there?
Yeah, I think we could do 3 feet and we'll, we'll do like, we'll mulch it, put some plants there and stuff as well.
Yeah, just to make it look a little better. All right. That sounds good. Very good, very good, Mr. Cabeas, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, very good, thanks. Okay, let's get going here. Is there anyone to like speak in favor?
Uh, we have a few hands up. I don't know if they're in favor or not. We'll start with John Ruggieri, then we'll come to 60 Summit Ave and Laura Liskom, so, John Ruggieri?
By the way, while we're here, is everybody gonna tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God? Just sort of nod or something, thank you, thank you.
Yes, I do.
I didn't get you. Did you say yes?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, right.
Hi, guys, hello. So first of all, I want to tell you that these kids that just made their presentation are wonderful neighbors.
Right.
And they've invested a lot in their house, as we have. My, I, I've been here now for a couple of years with my two sons. We first lived at 160 Sum, Summit Avenue and now we re-bought because we loved this area so much at, at Wallaston. Uh, a, and on Summit Avenue in particular. I'm at number 90 and I look directly across at their house.
Yeah.
Um, so my thought is this, I think it's great that I think it's great that you guys made the suggestion that they move that back a little bit and put those plantings. And, and guys, neighbors, if you're for that, that's fine. I would also tell you that I was gonna suggest, and unfortunately I didn't have a chance to see you as neighbors, but I was gonna suggest if you moved it back or just kept it down to 4 feet, I wouldn't mind it being out further, so you had more of a yard. Because I know the little kids and especially the pets are important. So it was just a question, if I had the same concern, I just didn't want a wall on Summit Avenue, there's no other houses that have a fence on the sidewalk, uh, all the way up Summit from South Central. But, uh, but I'm not opposed. I think, I think you're, you deserve to use your property the way you want, to protect your kids and protect your pets. Whatever these guys, they're obviously a very conscientious board, whatever they tell you, but I would have, I personally would have wanted the bigger yard with a little lower in the front on the.
But I would have, I personally would have wanted the bigger yard with a little lower in the front on the street, but that's totally up to you guys. Good luck.
Thank you, John.
60 Summit, 60 Summit, you're up.
Summit's next.
Uh, yeah, we're just down the road. Um, don't have anything to say other than we're, we're for it.
Can you tell us your name and address?
Uh, Jason Langley. We're at 60 Summit.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
And Laura Liskom?
Hi, Laura Liskom. I am at 256 Pine Street, so just, uh, you know, a door or two down.
Yeah.
And I want to speak out in favor of the project. Christos and Sophia have been fabulous, very considerate neighbors. They have done a fabulous job of, um, making significant improvements both to their home and to the landscaping of the property. It makes sense for them to have a fenced-in area uh, for, um, uh, the child, little George, as well as the, um, the future dog. And we do hope that once the grill is on the deck, that there will be a neighborhood block party. Um, and we will. But, um, they are very considerate neighbors and, um, I know that other abutters who couldn't be here tonight to speak to you have, uh, expressed um, very positive thoughts about their project. Thank you.
Thank you. What's with the future dog? What's that?
I have a dog.
Oh, 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 oh. All right. Is there anyone else speak in favor? Call up part of the hearing closes. I have a letter here from May 25th from the DPW, 73 Summit Ave, case number ZBA 2131. We have reviewed the middle of the above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. The proposed six-foot fence at the corner of Pine Street and Summit Ave may affect site distance requirement for traffic. You're going to be back far enough. I hope. Uh, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call?
No hands.
All part of the hearing closed. Uh, Mr. Kovaes, just as long as we put in there, uh, the landscaping will be maintained in a healthy fashion outside the fence, which I know it will. Does everyone's talking about your landscaping?
All hands, that has nothing to do with me.
I hear that.
Chairman, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor. I just want to say a little something. I was, I drove up there this, uh, this afternoon. And, uh, the ne, your neighbor, uh, to the right of your house, uh, was there. And the first thing, I stopped and the first thing she said to me was, you're looking for the golf course. It's over. And I said, no, man. I'm looking for, uh, 73, as she says right there. And lots of times when I come up to a property that's going to be in the front of the zoning board, the neighbors give me a dirty look or something, but because they're not in favor of the project. You know, they have a book in the middle. I come and tell you why it's bad. Uh, she had ample opportunity to do that and she did not. So, uh, so I think that, that bodes well for you folks. So I just want to say that. You have a nice neighbor, too.
So Brian?
Talking about.
No, I'm, I'm in favor. I, I appreciate the, um, improvements that you can make. And good luck if you get a dog.
Also?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor. I appreciate the fact that the neighbors came forward and spoke in favor and gave us a little bit more information about the, um, you know, um, personality and contributions of the applicants.
Right.
It's helpful. Um, I just want to try to balance the look of that neighborhood. Um, and I think a six-foot wall is, is, is high. They can do some other videos or something like that to sort of soften the hardness of a, of a, uh, fence. I think it would be, it would go a long way towards improving the, uh, the appearance.
Yeah. And Mr. Hemel?
Yeah, I went up there too. It's a nice, you've done a nice job of the house. It's a nice neighborhood. Um, I'm happy you're pushing the fence back at least three feet from the sidewalk and going to put some landscaping there to soften up that big block of a wall. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. You sure you don't want to go to a four-foot fence and? All right, we're all set. Mr. Kovaes, can we make a motion, please?
Yes. Matter number 21 dash 31, Sophia, I don't want to tell you her name, guys. What was it? Okay, that. For advantage, we build a rear deck that tore down, that was torn down in 2016. It is a six-foot fence. The front of the premises number 79 Summit Ave, Quincy, grant the variance with this, uh, this condition, that you move the fence back three feet and that you landscape the outside of it.
In a healthy, maintained way. Uh, seconded?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Michael Kovaes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yeah, sure.
Russell Chin?
Yes, I'm in favor.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for a great night. Thanks for hanging in. Thanks for being here. And thank you so much for making my job easier.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Still got to talk.